Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we resume the conversation? Dr. Cane has made a recommendation. When you were comparing the numbers from the different districts, did you look at the positivity rate as well?
Yes, that is the positive number. So those are just positive cases.
But I still have asked that all board members respond to my question. If anybody wants to answer.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah.
Dr. Cane has made a recommendation. My understanding is that none of the board members want to follow that recommendation and I want to know specifically why each board member would want to.
So basically from past experience, I mean, what goes up must come down. I feel as if when Dwellow, we put masks on them, we were at a pretty high level and I don't contribute to that 100% to masks. But it was also a different variant of the virus. So I feel with this new virus, there's nothing stopping it. And I don't believe that a mask is going to stop it. I think it's been proved with the data Shannon brought us and that's what I'm basing it all on.
I don't have the slide. And what about the thresholds? No thresholds at all either?
Correct, that's where I'm at personally, yes.
Yeah, I actually, I'm not opposed to the thresholds. I want to see this be operational. I'm not sure if the masks work or don't work. If we think, we have tried everything else and this is something to try, to do a temporary, you know, if it reaches a threshold and we're going to do it for two weeks or I think that's a temporary amount of time that will allow us to see if it is going to work or isn't going to work. So, I mean, I really could go either way. I definitely, you know, I want us to come to a consensus as a board. But if we wanted to try a two-week time period, I'm not opposed to that.
So I feel as if we have tried two-week time periods and we've tried this all year. And, I mean, do we see a little improvement, yes? But I would argue that, like I said, you know, it's hitting its peak and it's coming down. So with this new variant, I just, it is spreading everywhere. The flu is spreading everywhere, people are getting colds, everyone's getting sick. It's just a bad year. And I, I think we just need to do what we can to keep our schools open and if it gets to the point that they end up closing, you know, we do what we can to get the kids back into school as quick as possible.
So I guess even at that, you're looking at a threshold, right? So what does that look like? If we have to close a building and for what period of time and based on what kind of statistics and, you know, so still, they need a way to operationally, whatever action they're going to take.
So, so for that, I'm open to opinion. Like, at what point do you think you're not able to operate a school? I, I, I don't know.
If I may go back to the mask component, they did work. Not to keep them on forever, but it's clear from Dwellow, right? It's clear from Prairie View that the masking in fact did impact, right? And we're fighting an opposition to the primary goal, which is to keep kids in school. So if it's not going to be masking, what else is there that we can do that's going to keep kids in school?
So I think we started this whole conversation, it wasn't over kids, it was over teachers and not having enough people, the staff. I feel as if, you know, 17,000 students and we're at five...
Five twenty-eight.
Five twenty-eight. I mean, it, it, we're, we're in the middle of winter. People are getting sick. We can't prevent people from getting sick, in my opinion. It's going to happen. I mean, I, I think we just have to deal with as best as we possibly can and I personally don't believe that masking is a...
President Bates, may I, sorry, Director Garber, do you mind if I say something?
You're right.
Okay, so back to the masking and the component, if they work or don't work. I, I just think, again, we, when you talk about Dwellow, we, we really don't know that we can attribute the masking to that being the cause of the decrease in numbers. We don't know if, let's say, a family or multiple families did their own mitigations at home. Maybe they did fewer trips outside. Maybe, I mean, we really don't know. Maybe they kept kids home from their dance class outside of school. We, we don't know. And so we're making an assumption that the one thing we did was successful. And then just me having visited schools, the compliance, even for the, the children who are choosing to wear masks, they are definitely trying to wear it the best, but there's evidence in walking in any school, especially elementary, which that, that is where we're having our major issue. There's, I think, 10 positives of staff at Prairie View. It's under their chin, it's under their nose, they're taking it off, they're... So, so it's not being worn properly. So yes, we had a mask mandate for a particular school at a particular threshold, but we didn't investigate the compliance of that piece. So we don't know if they were worn correctly. So I guess I would argue, is it coincidental? Because we didn't investigate anything else. And it's the will of the board to have any kind of mask mandate, even at a threshold. I don't want to task the administration or our staff to do more work. I don't want to put more on their plate. But if we're going to say that masking works, I think we actually need to investigate that and take the time that, to see if that's really what's attributing to the down or decrease of cases. Because it does impact the entire educational experience.
If I may actually address your question. When I'm thinking of transportation, when I'm thinking of child nutrition, when I'm thinking of the talk, what we are feeling crunches when it comes to staffing in multiple employee group areas. And that's going to continue, that's going to continue. So if that means that services ultimately become interrupted and we still find a way to keep doors open, if that means that it's cold lunch versus a hot lunch, we're closer to those realities. Interruption and inconsistency of plus services, we're closer to those realities than we are far away. I, to Director Stolli's comments about masking, we can, I'm not talking about experiences elsewhere just based off of what we have seen. And I would agree, Omicron is different than, than Delta. But based off of the experiences that we have seen, right? It was an effective strategy. I would retort and respond to the board and ask you this. What other district of our size is not having at least a threshold in place, right? I.e. not a mandatory piece that you must, but if conditions warrant, there's something that is in place.
And I would say, I would say to the board, and I wasn't there, but I did watch, you know, the board said, I believe it was at the December meeting, if conditions arise that weren't doing something, we will come back and we will look at doing something. And so I guess my question is, if not this, then what, right? Because I don't have other ideas. I would be willing to give this a try just to see, because if it does work, great. If it doesn't, then what, what have we lost? There's no loss in giving it a try. But what is, what else do we do? You know, I talked about potentially adding an extra day onto the, the holiday week, but we have to do something to, to help our team, I mean...
President Bates. Yeah. In looking at the Dwellow data, I know that we had anecdotally said that, I know, in looking at the Dwellow data, I know that we had anecdotally said that the numbers decreased. We did have 43 positives between August 30th and September 9th, which was the date of the Dwellow meeting. Given that that was the Delta variant at that time or even possibly Alpha as well, it does take a little bit longer for it to run its course and run out. So within the week of us putting that mask mandate in place, we went from 43 positives in a 10-day period to the next week, we only added 11 positives. Once that week was over, for a whole month, we added four positives. And that's the Dwellow data synopsis for the timeline in which we implemented masks and saw the results.
So I guess while that obviously is all factual, is that just exclusive to that school? Or did we see a decrease in cases at all school that were not masked? Was, was the ebb and flow of the virus at that point in time going down in, in our school district, other school districts and within our county? Because I believe that was indeed the trend.
We would need to look at that more closely.
I think that's an important fact to have. Again, I think my concern is we're making an assumption, we're leaning on one mitigation strategy, thinking that's the mitigation strategy that's going to get us through this.
So if I could say something at this point in time, we're talking about mitigation strategies and one of which is obviously, should we mask up the kids again? All of the parents have told you. And who would love the kids more than their parents? They have all told you, they don't want their children masked up. No one is afraid of Omicron. No one is afraid of it. It's a cold, just like the common cold is a COVID virus. And we don't have a, we don't have a vaccine for a common cold either. So, again, and I know that there are some parents that would definitely like to have their children masked up into school. I sent all of you an email about how we could do that because you wouldn't even have to have had any extra teachers. Now, the biggest problem that we have is we have such a contagious virus like a cold. So far, there's been no one that I know of that has died because of it. They have been, this is new statistics that's coming out and we're always getting new statistics. And a lot of the information that's been coming out is that, you know, we marked those, a lot of those deaths down, that they were COVID. But the biggest reason that they were marked down, that they were COVID, because there was a lot of money involved. We're also hearing about all the monies that was turned over to the schools for a lot of different things that, you know, that was supposed to be COVID-related. Like I said, I, there's just an awful lot of things that we know now, today, that we didn't even know before Christmas break. So, as I said, and you're talking about, you know, well, what kind of metrics? You know, if you don't have the students and if you don't have the, the, the teachers and the people and the staff there, that's the criteria right there. So it's not necessarily, I mean, I, I think that in the conversation that we had before the, the open session, it was, you know, what happened in the past with when kids had flu. And that's exactly what we had. We had kids and the, and the teachers and the staff that were out. So there wasn't much of a choice. Wasn't a choice. You had to close it down. Would that be correct? I mean, I don't know if you were here at that time, but I don't remember if that...
That does predate, that'd be...
Pardon me?
That's before I was...
Okay, all right, so I do remember that. And like I said, I think that you don't have, you don't have the staff or the children to come to school or you don't have the children to occupy the classrooms. But again, you know, there's, you know, there was a suggestion that, you know, you could, you could have actually separated the children that had, the children that were masked because that was about 2% of, of the entire population, student population. You could have switched those around. There's generally five classes to each grade level. You would have had, you wouldn't have had even a teacher shortage at that. And you would have had a situation where I know that there are a lot of parents that will want to still have their children masked. But we already know, we already see the emotional and social harm that this does to children. We already know this. The stats are out on already. And we've been learning about this since before school started.
So I, I want to make a comment to what you said.
Okay.
I got over 100 emails and only two emails weren't asking for mitigation. So I don't think we're receiving the same emails because those aren't the ones that people are sending to me and I don't know if it's because...
No, I would agree with you because I think that right now, I don't think that, I don't believe that we're, we're not seeing people asking us, you know, other than the people to, to mitigate because we have in place right now, what we have in place is masks are optional. And we had about 96% of the students that came back to school without a mask. And yet we had a mask mandate. But why would you not, why would you think that there wouldn't be people that, when we were doing contact tracing? Because you would have had such, you had such a low percentage of, 2%, about 2% in a classroom that were masked.
I don't know if there is an official number to have as a percentage.
Well, we know that there was about 2% that voted, that opted to go for virtual. And we know, or at least I spoke with several teachers and they basically said that there was maybe like three or four
I think it depends on who you talk to.
In their classroom.
I think it depends on who you...
Well, I don't expect any teacher to be dishonest about that.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I think we're talking to different people. I think we're getting emails from different people.
Well, you know, they would have been a teacher that anybody could have talked to, so...
Okay, so I, I would like to come back around since you're already, we're kind of conversing right now for you to give me specific reasons why you're not willing to follow the recommendation given by the administration.
Well, I don't believe that these things are going to work with this particular virus. I don't think if you wore a mask and I don't think if you did other things such as even keeping people away. I think if you went down to get the mail, now if you're mailbox, you might be, you know, susceptible to a virus as, as, as contagious as it is. So I think you just have to understand that this is what it is and no matter, I don't think if you showered every day and sprayed yourself down with alcohol and wiped yourself with sanitizer, I don't think that that's going to keep this away.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
It's inhaled.
Director Getzim?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I've made my points pretty clear along the way, whether it's the litigation risk of putting in thresholds or mask mandates, given where we're at and the legal advice that we've gotten therein. I think I echo similar points to my fellow board members that have already spoken. And then I largely took a point I made earlier. You know, the vast majority of what we're seeing today, I believe, is related to, you know, exposures and spread outside of the classroom. It's indicative of what we're seeing in totality of the community in terms of prevalence and rates, et cetera. You know, I, I recognize the operational aspects of having staff, you know, like we need staff to have in our buildings. And I don't believe this mitigation strategy is going to be the one causes the difference materially to that answer of that issue.
Director Schaefer?
Yes, can I ask you a question first?
I'd like for you to ask, answer mine. I'd like, I want to kind of wrap up with me asking everyone first and then I'd be happy to answer your question.
I'd like to know this question first, I guess, first of all.
I don't want to argue about it.
Because I, I'd like to make my comments to the board. I'm not making my comments to any one board member. I'll present my comments to the board. Mr. Shulte said we had 87%. One thing is, recess is giving me the opportunity to go back and look at the percentages that we reported to DESI. And I really don't want to bring them up here, but I will to make sure that I say everything properly. In 2017, our percentage of attendance was 88.8. 2018, it was 88.7. 2019, 88.1. 2020, 87.2. And 2021, it was 80.7. Mr. Shulte said today in school, we was roughly around 87%. Am I correct, Mr. Shulte? So, so my point is, we run in regular attendance. You might say, is what we have in years prior within about 1%. As far as the questions about transportation, we've always been short on transportation since the day I came on to school. Food service is probably the next thing. And all food services, no matter if it's restroom or looking for help and probably paying more than what we are as a school district. So my thoughts is, and my point has been this always, we want to put masks on, but yet we do not want to take the hard steps to go beyond that. So therefore, I will not support anything that we do not have in place at this time. And I believe that is the, on the order of the health department.
What hard steps are you not forced to?
Well, as far as how we handle our schools and how we keep students masked and what we do beyond the educational realm of our school that we've met, that there is nothing after school, before school on necessarily any extracurricular activities. And I'm as strong as part of our sports, but we don't take steps there. We do not take steps on our clubs. We do not take step through this whole thing. We did not take step vendors coming in our schools, either for our students or for our staffs. There's a lot, what I'm saying is, there's a lot more we could do. And I, I don't think society on the whole is... I just think we need to get back to be the educational center of our communities.
That answered my question. I'll just say, there's been a recommendation made and a lot of opinions thrown out. So what is the board wanting to do, is my question?
Grab the bus and the wheels fall off.
The superintendent has given his recommendation. Everyone has stated why they don't want to follow his recommendation. So are we going to do nothing at all, is my question to this board?
Well, I think President Bates, if I may, I think she had mentioned discussing, you know, having time off sometime during this, this wave of positivity. We could discuss that, I guess, if we wanted to. In a situation like this, our community needs to understand, we would of course look to give them that runway that you're, that you're wanting to give our public, but in past infectious and contagious diseases like flu and, you know, any strain of influenza, we do the best that we can. And that's what we're doing. And I think in a decision like this, that's, that's all we can do. I don't know that this board can give you direction and say, I think we should take January 13th off. I, I think we're just going to have to see what happens and play, how it plays out, like Vice President Bryce said. But again, hearing other comments from the board, we can talk about that further.
So Friday is an early release day. What are, what are your thoughts about for the elementary and middle school levels just making that a day off?
Or, what day, what day were we giving the teachers off?
That's in February 13th.
Do we move that off?
We've already communicated to our public, like people who made plans and related to it.
So Monday is a holiday and then Tuesday, I believe, they're working on grades.
There's a PD day.
PD day, so we're off Monday, Tuesday and Friday.
So there's a nice, quasi-break.
So what does, what does that look like if we take a full day on Friday?
Well, first of all, we're going to impact semester exams at middle and high school most immediately. You've got teachers that are working to turning grades to close out the fall semester if we're transitioning to the spring semester.
What is that, may I ask, what that's supposed to prove? Like, give the Friday off, what is that going to accomplish? Because, I mean, the goal is to keep kids in school, right?
Well, it's similar to if, if we're comparing this to a flu or a stomach virus that's kind of going rampant we have in the past that, okay, we're going to shut down. And if our window is five days, does that give us that five-day break to clear anyone that's out and then hopefully reset?
If we did the conclusion, we're going to be on this Friday, that'd be a different set of decisions that we would have...
We'd have four days, right?
We do.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
We also have multiple weeks in which we're going to come back and still be in Iowa's storm.
So, so was your plan over those four days to deep clean all the classrooms, all the schools, everything? And can that be our plan?
So we learned that over the course of an extended weekend in the past, with, definitely with the Alpha variant, right? That if you had, things would die, right? What was transmittable would be dying over the course of some time. So we should keep hitting the areas that we're hitting. But our primary goal is to have kids in school five days a week and we're, we're taking that off the table by, by shutting the doors on, on Friday. And today is Monday evening for people to figure things out.
So can I ask a question from the standpoint that, what I'm also reading from a lot of the parents is that if their child is, is ill or that they know they had been exposed to someone, they're keeping it home anyway. I mean, many of the parents are already doing that. So, you know, I, I don't necessarily see it, obviously Friday is a big testing day, of course. Do you think anybody's going to miss it? Of course they are. They're not going to come to school when they're sick and they're not going to even feel like taking a test. They're going to miss it anyway. Surely there is another avenue that they can make up the test, right? Is that right?
Of cour, I, I will say yes. Both at the middle and the high school, our teachers in our buildings are absolutely working with families on a case-by-case basis. If that's what's needed, that's what happens.
Do you think following the CDC guidance is preventing healthy kids from coming to school? Are healthy kids and teachers coming to school?
I think, I think the guidance clearly is changing at a rate. I, I've made my comments as related to May, when the mad announcement, the announcement was made. I think we are all at our best when we have some consistency and some regiment to what we're doing and how we're going about doing it. I, I'm not, I would not have made that announcement on December 27th, but I don't work for the CDC. At the end of the day, we're, to close on Friday takes away from that very piece of consistency that we're talking about. You have parents that are clamoring for us to keep doors open. That is still the goal, that's what we're efforting to do.
I have some questions as it relates to this CDC guidance. I'm just wondering, in reading the communicable, communicable disease policy that we have, there's no reference to the CDC guidance. So why was there a decision to be made to follow that guidance? It does say that you're not supposed to be in school, whether you're staff or student, if you are positive, if you can transmit. However, it does say that if you have medical evidence that you're clear to come to school, you can come to school. That medical evidence would be the relationship between a staff person and their doctor and a student and their pediatrician. So I'm just wondering why the administration chose to send out that letter citing the guidance that had no reference to the CDC guidance, the contagious disease policy, the communicable disease policy? Because I feel like that's, that's attributing to our staffing shortages. And I'm also wondering why we're not following just the sick leave, the short-term sick leave, acute, acute illness leave policy, which is three days and then that, you know, the administrative, administration can ask for a doctor's note on day four. And I'm also wondering if we thought it was, I just, I guess I'm wondering what, what the thought process was to sending out a letter on COVID leave pay because that also plays into positive, it's, it plays into positivity. Bottom line is, if you're positive from COVID, whether you test or not, if you're not, if you're not well, you're not coming to school. So it, it's just, and, and that's why, you know, with the masking, we can put on a mask and it might bring the actual positivity down. Those numbers might go down, but that doesn't mean staff's coming to school. It means they're just not testing. So we still may not have the bodies left. And then according to the numbers that you presented today, it said 77 COVID-positive out of 209 absences of staff. That's 37% of the absences. So the majority of the absences... So the majority of the absences are even COVID related, but we're considering COVID mitigations.
Well, it could, it could be, right? This is only positive.
They, they could be, yeah.
This is only positive individuals.
Right, they're only positive.
And maybe they did it as, yes.
Childs, vows.
And we have, we are still home today. Like we have people going home all day and night today.
So I do want to speak to policy 2860, specifically the regulation. State statute says all employees will follow the most recent guidelines issued by the Centers for Disease Control. Not trying to harsh words here, but we were facing a scenario where we needed to do something quickly. We had to, we had to administrate, right? We had to make some decisions to keep people up and working, right? We don't want people that are transmittable, right, in schools contagious, we don't, we don't want that. And so I know it's a part of a conversation, it's different than what we're talking about when it comes to mitigation strategies and specifically what's going to happen with masking. But, but per the policy from, let's, let's say June 18th of 2009, that language has been.
Okay. It's number two, if you look at the policy.
I guess, I guess I didn't see it in the communication that sent, was sent to parents. And maybe I overlooked it. I guess I didn't see that piece from it. I think you're interested in parents.
Yeah, so a couple of questions on staffing here, as we've got talking about staffing. Why don't we bump our short term? And I presume this is certified staff that's at hundreds to 125 and our long term from 125 to 150 at this time. Also, you said there was an issue with food service. Do not we have a third party providing food service? February?
We have. Third party that is.
Are they providing what we need or not?
They're not, they're not able to, near their staffing limitations.
Maybe within that department, we look at, however, I would hate to see somebody come in and make more of somebody existing. And I don't know what we can do with health benefits. Maybe through this, we can, if they want to waive the health benefits, if we have that opportunity. We used to do in transportation, do we still do that?
We do not, we can't do that because we're part of the trust now. So previously, we had not been part of the trust and people could independently waive it, but they cannot because we're part of the trust. So people, there's a couple of people in transportation who are grandfathered in because they.
Using a different insurance?
Selected that, yes, we're in cooperating school district trust.
What was we before?
I, I don't know because I wasn't here, but we had that ability before. My understanding is we don't have that ability now because we're in the.
So can we do, can we do selective insurance and what, what does our premium cost us?
I, I don't believe that we can. We, what I, what we have negotiated with, with our benefits companies is these are the benefits that we signed up for. This is the benefit that they offer. And you either get that benefit or you don't get that benefit. And that is what we signed up for in our arrangement with them.
And who's the carrier of the insurance, can I ask that?
There are various carriers.
That's a.
Harper for Life Insurance, various carriers for various things.
President Bates, if I may, to me, the board has spoken as it relates to the solution strategies. I think it's pretty clear. The question is, is whether or not there's a board ask, and maybe it's not tonight, you don't have to answer that question. If there's things the board can do outside of that, what you've recommended, that you want to bring back to us, that, that can be in terms of whether it's helping with subpay, volunteer programs, whatever that could be. I don't want to sit here, I don't want to sit here and solution this because we could be here all night. I think the board has spoken in terms of what we think about mitigation strategies being recommended going forward. If there's board actions specifically that needs to come forward to deal with staffing shortages and creative thinking, I think this, I think seeing, I think head nodding, there's an agreement to look at every opportunity and keep the buildings open.
We will put COVID update on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Any other discussion or comment? I would just like to comment one last time. I think it's poor, poor choice for the board to choose to not move forward with any mitigation, especially any of the mitigation that's been provided by all of the health professionals for the past year and a half to two years.
So I would like to say that our next meeting is next Thursday. So we should have more determination. We should have another week, we should have another week of information while, you know, by that time. And I think that one of the things that I kind of have seen in a lot of the emails that I was getting was that there was a sense that we weren't acting fast enough anyway. So I think what I would like to start to see is that if we have some really major jumps, then that we shouldn't really wait till the next board meeting, you know, which could be after next Thursday, could be another four weeks. So I think I'd like to see some changes in that from that standpoint, that we at least come together and have a conversation a lot sooner than what we have. And I think that there's.
So I'm confused with that.
Well, what I'm saying is that, you know, we're getting an awful lot of our parents' input on many, many things. And, and I've been, obviously, I think our parents have a lot to say. But what I'm, what I mean is that if we see some things that are starting to happen, you know, maybe a little more quickly because as I said, this is.
Define things, because I feel as if that's what brought us here.
The illness, you know, the illness. Because while, you know, while we're all thinking that things are going to be maybe less in a couple of weeks, it could very well go the opposite.
Would that change your mind on masking?
No, no, it wouldn't. No, I'm just talking about a meeting. I'm just talking about a meeting.
To talk about what at that?
Well, the other options that we will be presented with besides the mitigation and masking.
So I feel as if.
So give us more time to think about some things.
But I feel as if that's where the board is headed with giving you guidance and then at the next board meeting, kind of update us on the guidance or update us on what, what, I guess, where we stand without any mitigation, any masking, what the district can do and what.
I, I will say this, we will continue to monitor the numbers, right? I believe we're starting to see something in the past, last week, coupled with the start of the week being today. Right, we're starting to see something as relates to numbers. But I know it's, it's later in the evening, but in terms of IDA, coming up with, with creative solutions, we'll continue to put our heads together to try to come up with something. But I will tell you, in terms of level best, in terms of practices that others are engaging in, there's a reason that they have the mitigation strategies that they have in place, and that includes masking. We'll continue to look, but I can't promise you that there's going to be a, a uniform that comes in next Thursday and it's the great fantasy and answer to all things, right? I, I can't make that promise, right? We'll continue to work, we'll talk to anybody that we can to come up with some additional ideas. But I wouldn't plant my seed of hope on, on that, right? That's not what I would do at this point. So we'll continue to work and try to problem solve and see what else we can come up with.
Well, I guess to Dan's, to Dan's question earlier, you know, we're looking at prayer review specifically, right? They're at almost 6% and they have 10 staff out. What is that threshold, right? Because if we got to close a school for a day or a couple of days, I mean, we, what does that look like to have to move forward with not being able to staff the building to be safe with the kids that are there?
Honestly, honestly, board, we, we have to face this because we've taken steps to, to address that before we reach that point.
What has that looked like in the past? We've had to do it in the past, pre-COVID days. So there, there had to have been a point in the past where you guys were like, we have shut this school down. We can't staff anymore.
May I speak?
Yes, please, Dr. Hefter.
So the data that we provided you tonight specifically showed, and I know you're saying pre-COVID, but specifically shows that we, leading up to, in, in 2020, November, we came back from that five day break and we started seeing numbers go immediately up to the point that we could not staff. And we came together at that point. And those are the numbers that we gave you for comparison, because those are the numbers that we're approaching right now. And the numbers that we shared staffing wise, those are not total overall staff numbers. Those are just teachers, pairs and IAs. So the numbers I gave you are not, like, we had more than 340 absences today. The numbers I gave you are only teachers, pairs and IAs. So we're getting to that point where we could not staff. We legitimately could not staff. So that's why we put Wensel Middle. Because if you remember, Wensel Middle was on fire at that point. They had a huge positivity rate, they went to virtual. And then secondary, we put on virtual for the remainder until winter break. That was from November 16th, I believe, until winter break. Because then we have the ability to have some staff from the secondary go to the elementary schools so we could keep the elementary schools open, because we could get some staff. We could get some subs, because again, that took three buildings out of the equation for subs. It allowed us to put them, or more than that, I guess, six buildings. It allowed us to put all of our subs at the elementary. So that was, that was a strategy that we took before when we had holes that we legitimately got to place where we could not staff. So right now, everyone in teaching and learning, because they're certified staff, are going and subbing in buildings. Right now, we have administrators out and we have everyone going to the buildings to help to sub and fill these positions. At some point, that may not be possible. Now, that's the data that we're trying to present to you. That's the data that we presented to you today.
I guess what you're saying is we have a higher percentage of, of staff out than what we do students.
Um, yes, what, what my data is showing is that at that same point where we reached an inability to staff before, we are at those same numbers right now and it continues to get higher. And so we already know what threshold that is because we experienced it once already. So we're trying to let you know that we're, we're getting to that threshold again.
And what she, I don't know if you heard her, what she said was last time when we got to this level is when the high school, middle school went virtual for some time so that they could take the staff available and filter down into those lower levels and cover.
And at the same time, that's not a viable option this year because the state took the AMI days away. So we have 36 hours to, to deal with. So when and if we do get to, get to a point where we have to close buildings now, after the 36 hours, we'll be making those days up one for one. And, you know, we do have some snow days to, to mess with, but if we have snow, we're senior day, everything else. But we're, we're really limited. So by the time we would get to the point where we would need to implement some of these practices, we would already be too late and be looking at a seven year school year as well.
Historically, I go back to this, we, when we brought something to you, there's been action. So we haven't had to entertain that. There've been steps that have been taken. I don't think that the, I don't think that our parents are going to see our kids in school in the middle of June, unless it's summer school.
And I guess I'm struggling because, as I've said before, I've asked each of you individually why you don't want to follow the recommendation that the superintendent and cabinet have created. But there's not a solution because it's the job of the superintendent to manage, but no one wants to give real feedback and fix what's happening now because they're trying to prevent something worse from happening in the future. So they're asking, this is where we're at, this is where we don't want to get to? But you're saying no, so nothing. Go and fix it, come up with new suggestions in a week or a week and a half or whatever it is. But what are we doing now? What are we doing the rest of this week? What are we doing in the beginning of next week? How is it being addressed if nothing is being done, is my question.
That's what I was saying earlier, though. I, I don't think you can fix it. I think the devil is going to happen and.
But there's no solution for not having enough staff. We're not giving direction for that. We're just saying, we don't want to do anything.
Like I said.
I guess that's where I, I'm at. Like, that's what I'm struggling with, Aaron, is if we are not going to move forward with the mitigation, I feel like administration needs something.
I thought, well, so we did discuss upping subpay and, and that's something you said you would look at.
But it's not now.
I realize it's not now, but I feel as if it, it's something that's moving forward that it's not even hurt to have in place. I think we could have gotten started on that, you know, a while back, but you didn't. And now we're dealt with what's going on now. So just to say, well, we're not going to do it, then we'll be in the same position in another two, three weeks. And it would be nice to get ahead of every other district and try to do it now.
We have made some adjustments to sub.
So we did, we were proactive in our campaign. And if you look at the chart that was provided to you, we are ahead of the surrounding districts. The other piece with subs is that when teachers are out, typically subs are out for the very same reason. So part of the problem that we're having and all the districts are having with subs is that they're also sick. So part of the reason we're having flu problems is not because of pay, it is because they are also sick. So the same, they come from the same population of our community that is experiencing the high positivity.
Right, so, and that's to my point. Everybody is getting it and I just, I mean, at a certain point, I feel as if we cannot do anything. I just, I don't think anything we can do is going to stop this spread. It is spreading out of control and it's going to run its course and then people are, are going to get better. We'll be back in school and numbers are going to go down, but in the meantime.
How do kids learn if there aren't staff to teach them?
Other, other entities get to tap out, we don't.
We still have, we still have to have kids coming to school and learning. The, the number one thing is having kids in-person learning. That is what everyone in the community has said.
Correct, and we will, we'll have to.
If we don't have staff, we can't do that.
We will have to make those days up. I, I get that. And, and it's not going to be fun, but it is reality. I mean, we're having a very tough winter and it's, I don't personally think it can be avoided. It's what is dealt to us and it's reality. So if we have to make days up, we're going to have to make days up. It, it is what it is.
But it's not about making days up, it's about having a plan in place to know what to do. Because we're not giving any direction as a board to the administration. They have given us their recommendation, no one wants to follow it. So we're not giving them, other than saying, everybody's going to get COVID and we just have to deal with it.
But that's what I'm telling you. I don't, I, other than that, I don't feel as if there's anything else you can do to stop the virus.
So what do we do if, let's say prayer review, was it 5.92%? Let's say it jumps up because it's gone up since, let me finish talking.
Okay, sorry.
It's gone up since Thursday. So let's say there just aren't enough staff. What are we supposed to do with the kids that need to go to school to learn?
So, so Erin, to my point, they, the experts have given out vaccines to try to stop this. They've done everything that they can think of to try to stop it and nothing's working. It, it's, just keeps going and.
I'm not talking about that, though.
I realize, but.
Bodies in the building. How is he going to do that? So Director Stoli, you mentioned earlier in the meeting that Desi was meeting to talk about at-home learning days, is that?
No, what, what I was saying, and Dr. King, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is there's a regularly scheduled state board of education meeting on Tuesday.
Like tomorrow?
Yes, there is talk about adding additional AMI days to the agenda. So far, they have not done that. But they, but Desi had said that they recognize with various mitigations that schools have put in, including the very controversial topic of masking, that it's not helping staff stay in school. So they're trying to solution it.
So at this point, we can't even say, instead of closing the doors, we can't say prayer review, that, you know, whatever percentage is going to, you know, have at-home learning. Not virtual, but a temporary at-home learning.
You're eating into hours that, that limit your flexibility on the backside, right?
So it still counts against you is what you're saying? We can't, we can't take abandon of an at-home learning day and still have those hours qualified?
We're selecting a virtual option versus in-person. Again, those counters to, what we've always talked about, and I thought it was universal agreement up, which is five days, right? You have a certain number of hours where you can do things, but above and beyond that, then that's going to be the one building in this scenario, right? Just going to have to make a base at the end of the school year.
How does that impact staff? If that were to happen at one particular building?
They would also, they would.
They have to come back as well.
So what?
I mean, what, what our goal was, from what I recall in our board meetings, is it was five days of school a week of in-person instruction, but it was also with masking optional. So you can't, you cannot avoid that fact. So that is the board's struggle, is we're trying to meet both of those things. So I feel like because of the majority of what we passed that, that is what we're trying to achieve. And so we're trying to figure out what is, is the preference at home, what?
Let, let, you know, not go to school and, and have it run hopefully its course, or the five-day window. I mean, that, that's what we're trying to figure out. But to say that it's just to go five days a week in person is incorrect.
I said we may not make that, because it depends on.
And I feel as if a lot of that five days came from when we were sitting in a hybrid model, when we were able to go to five days and, and weren't. I feel as if, if, if we can't physically do five days because we have ran out of teachers and staff to run our buildings, then it's understandable that it's reality, it is what it is, and we are going to have to make up those days. And hopefully, 2022, 23, somewhere here?
Look, I, we hear, we hear the, we hear that, as I'm understanding this, no changes in mitigation and no changes in masking, right? We do hear that. But please note that the masking is an attempt, right? One that has worked in this district, in this district, not other places, in this district this school year, right? That over time makes age, it makes, it makes, it makes a change, right? We see a change in what is happening as relates to health conditions within the building. We're not doing that, so we move forward for as long as we can. It, it feels like we're, we're, anyway, we have the direction that we need, and, and we, we have the direction.
And maybe I'd add to the direction. You know, if staffing has been the concern, what specific mitigation strategies to staffing are we considering? You know, to me, I've always been a proponent of not micromanaging if you're having in-person or virtual PD time, training, et cetera. You know, keeping staff separate, keeping staff, you know, healthy. If there's things that fit into that category, I believe you should be able to do that and work within that to minimize that. It's the same, I mean, frankly, I mean, I, I love the experience part of schools and assemblies that we've added back in, but it, but if it makes no sense to put kids in an assembly while this is going on, I'm not going to go throw a fit about that. I mean, there are, there are, whether they're material or not, we can all sit here and debate. I, I think that there's some flexibility within the operational pieces of the day-to-day school, which, which you've given, whether it's to, to merge things in terms of classrooms and the study halls, to have one adult over multiple, or put kids into other classrooms when there's not a sub. You know, to me, those things that I just described as well fit into those same categories of operationalizing little things that keep spreading minimized things as best as possible. I, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about those pieces, but, but to me, those should be flexible items that you have, that you're, you know, that you're ready for.
I would agree with that. Was there somewhere in the presentation, because I'm looking at it and I'm not seeing it now, there was something mentioned, maybe just during discussion, about visitors in the building and something else, because Dr. Goodson just talked about having assemblies and managing that to help mitigate, if you want to use that word. But, I mean, that hasn't been addressed in our discussion so far.
Yeah, I think the ask was.
Hold on visitors and in-person meetings.
Yeah, hold on visitors and in-person meetings, and then the.
So, so to Dale's point, for the visitors, I mean, was that carrying over to sporting events, or was it just strictly during school hours? I, I mean, it's, it just doesn't make sense.
We were able to navigate having extra encroperator activities, especially in our high schools last year. There's a, there's a means and way to do that this year.
There's a difference between having people come in to lunch.
Yes.
I want to go have lunch with my kid, but I haven't yet. But there's a difference between Shannon coming in and sitting at the table with my kid, and possible exposure, if people are concerned about that, versus not having those outside people coming in. And I've heard the argument that Shannon lives with her kids, and her kids would have whatever Shannon has. I'm just using it as an example, just as a first, because you're sitting there. But, you know, so then I, then my kid would already have it, because our kids are sitting there with my kids at lunch.
We're, we're literally filling our gyms with, with kids and parents from other schools for basketball. So how is that any different than one parent who wants to sit at a lunch table with their kid?
That is, it's different because it's during.
But that's what I'm saying.
You don't have a choice.
Dale's point was, if we're not doing it outside of school, then we're not, we weren't truly doing it to its full potential. So if we're just like, hey, throw masks on these kids in school, that doesn't account for when they're out of school in, in public. It doesn't account for sporting events.
We're not responsible for that.
We're hosting.
That part we are, but we're not responsible if they're going to the school.
So it's.
We're responsible when they're in our care.
And they are, I mean, essentially, they're in our building, right, for sporting events.
And sporting events are, except for the kids and the staff that have to be there, optional. Someone coming in to have lunch with my child at a lunch table is something that's not optional.
We've done things.
The other people, I'm not done talking, that other people make the choice to do. I'm done now.
We've done things in the past as it relates to lunch, too, in terms of separation, et cetera. To me, again, another example of where I don't think this board needs to navigate the daily operations, if there's a better way to eat lunch, have lunch provided, that is separating kids and keeping kids pod or whatever that is, to me, again, that's another example of the operational pieces of this that may make some sense.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean.
But that's different than people coming.
Yeah, I, I don't believe visitors in or out is a material effect. I stand by that statement for, for really, the whole beginning of that. I didn't believe that that was going to be a material change to spread, especially with community levels and things, and what we don't do outside of the building.
But it can overlap, right? If operationally, they say, we're going to have, we're in a pod, we're going to have lunch in the classroom, and now mom says, I want to come in and have lunch with my kid, how are we going to, you know, navigate that? Like, if we're saying, yeah, we can have visitors, whoever wants to come in, come in.
Yeah, mom and dad, our mom or dad sit outside the classroom to the table, I mean, by themselves. I mean, there, there's ways to accommodate that, again, I'm not trying to.
We, we honestly do not have the staff to push lunch service back in the classrooms, we don't have staff.
I make a motion to adjourn. All of you, say aye.
Aye.